Good evening, I'd like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. For May 3rd, 2021. We have two business items on our, on our agenda tonight. Our first item is a contract renewal with the judge in the municipal court, and I'd like to welcome Judge Randall here to our meeting. Our second item is the strategic work plan that talking about new efforts in engagement with the community. And the implement of the bulk plane and all residential zone districts. So those are our two items. Our study sessions, we begin with, with public comment on either of those agenda items. So if you would like to contact, comment, excuse me, on agenda item number one or number two, now is your opportunity to do so. If you would like to do that, please raise your hand in the zoom format, which is located at the bottom of your screen, it will be in the participant icon at the bottom. I think it's still there, I don't see it, but I, or there's a raise hand feature right at the bottom. So we will bring you into the meeting. And if you're on the telephone, you may unmute and we will bring you into the meeting for public comment. If you would like to speak, we have a three minute speaking limit. So when you first come on, please give us your first name, your last name, if you'd please spell your last name for the record and give us your address, then you'll have three minutes to address the council. So Masek, is anyone have their hand raised in the zoom format?
Mayor, we don't have anyone with us on Zoom this evening. We have some staff that are supporting the strategic plan discussion.
Okay. All right. So it doesn't look like we have any, any public comment today. So we will continue on to item number one, that's our contract renewal with the judge from the municipal court, Judge Randall. Judge, Patrick, did you have any introductory comments on this?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor, maybe just real quickly. The city charter does require that city council appoints presiding judge for two year terms and Judge Randall's term is coming up here expiring, I believe at the end of June. And so again, that is a city charter requirement and requires an ordinance to reappoint him. So tonight, we asked the judge to come to talk about what's going on in his court and request reappointment and then we'll have first reading on May 10th and the public hearing and second reading on May 24th.
Okay, thank you very much, Judge Randall.
Thank you, sir. Good evening to all. As Patrick was saying, I'm the presiding judge in the, in the department director for the court. So as some of you know, I wear two hats. So I sit on the bench for Wheat Ridge and then also handle the administrative matters. And the last couple of years have been challenging and the three areas that have been difficult for the court had been legislative items, COVID, of course, dealing with that. And then the sheriff's jail policy. So the legislation that was, we had some legislation passed in 2019 that required PR bonds or personal recognizance bonds for almost all municipal court charges and misdemeanors. And that makes it challenging. That means we can't have money bonds, we can't have surety bonds, we can't have cash bonds. So basically, if you miss court, your bond is just a promise to appear in court. And then we have quite a few no shows if it's just a PR bond. So we go through this cycle of non-appearance. So that's been challenging for the court last year and in 2019. And then as far as COVID, we've stayed open. Some of the courts closed for months. We stayed open other than I think maybe two weeks when Patrick closed the city back in March. But we, we have been able to stay open and what we've been doing is holding audio video court. So if people have a way to call in, they can call in and attend court. For all traffic cases, I do a guilty plea by mail. So if you don't want to appear in court and you'd like to plead guilty in a traffic case, I send you an order and a sentence and you can plead guilty by mail and not have to appear. We limit the number of people that come into court. Our seats are spread out. I took out most of the seats and we just have oh about 15, 20 chairs that are in the court. We've been lucky or actually maybe careful in that we haven't had any staff that has gotten sick by having contact with each other or with the public. So even though we're public facing, we haven't had any staff that have become infected. Jail policy, there's two things the sheriff implemented. One is a cap on the number of prisoners we can detain. And then also post that or after that, he imposed a COVID limit and the chief may have spoken to you about the fact that the jail will hardly take anyone. They have to have committed a serious felony before the sheriff will allow somebody to be booked at the jail. And I can tell you, that can be frustrating because you can have a warrant and when the police contact you, the police just say, you got a warrant. Then you commit a second crime and this goes on and on and on. So legislation has exacerbated our ability to, to handle cases as has the sheriff's policy on COVID. Couple of things we've done over the past two years have been to create courts. One is the homeless court and that's, that's brand new. We just started that last month. So, and that coincided with the hiring of the homeless navigator. Also sentencing for homeless people has always been tailored for their situation. Fines and jail aren't all that successful with sentencing homeless people. So the focus is more on getting them off the street and out of homelessness. If I could only get them to come to court, I think we could help them. The problem is just getting to come to court in the first place. We don't have a veterans court, but I did develop, I did develop a veterans handout. So when people come to court, I'll say, is anybody here a veteran? And if you are, here's the brochure and services may be available to you through the VA. And then some municipal courts don't handle juveniles, we do. So we have a real active juvenile court. And we've always had a diversionary program and that's, that's going to continue. And that's for marijuana, drug paraphernalia and alcohol. As far as addressing race and equity issues, the court's always been controlled, the judges have always been controlled by the judicial cannons. And basically they require fairness and impartiality. And then staff developed goals and missions a couple of years ago. And that contains race and equity provision. And then finally, as you folks know, we're doing supervisor training that started a couple of months ago. So I believe there's three or four sessions that all the supervisors have been and will be attending. One of the focuses has been and will be restitution. It's difficult to collect money anymore because I can't issue warrant if you don't pay restitution. So one of my goals has been and will be to get restitution for people who have medical bills and vet bills. Then finally, some of our priorities for next year are going to be staffing. Right now I don't have court marshals, I need court marshals and I'd like to be able to fill those two part-time court martial positions. There's some legislation that's coming up that's going to make it even harder to run municipal court. And actually it's addressed at municipal court and state court. And it's not going to allow detention for municipal charges, misdemeanor charges and most felonies. In other words, you used to be able to take somebody and book them at the jail depending on their behavior, how violent they were, how drunk, how difficult. Now you're just going to give them a piece of paper with a court date. If that passes, things are just going to get worse for us. And then I think the chief might have covered with you the school discipline bill. Basically the SROs, if this passes, will not be writing tickets for crimes in schools unless they are high level felonies or just heinous crimes. So finally, I think the focus for municipal courts, as it has been, it's going to be on the homeless population. I know we're dealing with some new licensing issues, that's important as well as property matters and property abatements. That's all I have. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much, Judge. Judge will take questions from council. Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have any questions. I just want to say thank you to Judge Randall. I have two daughters who are now in their twenties, so I don't have to go with them when they get speeding tickets, but had received speeding tickets when they're in high school. And both of the times that I was in your court, just really appreciate the respectfulness that, that you have for everybody. And in turn, everyone in the room has respect for you. And I appreciate the way that you run your courtroom. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions for the, for the judge, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate what you've done around the COVID and issues and making things virtual. Are there certain level of cases or certain elements of the court or main virtual or will be done via mail as you've done recently? Or how does that look moving forward?
Yeah, I think so. I think lower level matters where jail isn't, is completely off the table, not even a consideration. Those can be seen by audio video. I think with lower level, the traffic infractions, those are the lower level, non-accident, non-jailable traffic matters. I think a plea by mail is, is fine with those, will continue to, to do that. Some matters we have to hold in person if you have testimony or it's complex or there's a lot of documents or if you have a jury, I don't know how, no way you could do a jury, I think, by audio video. But if it's amenable to that type of format, I'd continue to go with the zoom or life size.
It's great. Thank you.
Questions for the judge. Masler back.
Thanks. I just wanted to add, thanks Judge so much for so much of the context that you bring. And we've had some really complex issues come about with how we're dealing with homelessness and how we're also, you know, dealing with various ordinances that we're passing. And I, I just really appreciate when we have these study sessions or we're talking about it in council, you can provide some context on how, how this is enforced. When people show up to court, it's really helpful on this side as we're making that policy. So thanks for everything.
You're welcome.
Please keep doing that.
Will do.
Additional questions? Judge, I had a question. I've heard in looking at the legislation that's going, going through the Capitol now, that the talk of class four, five and six misdemeanors or felonies, I'm not, can you, can you briefly explain to the layperson what those classifications mean?
Yeah, of course, the higher the level, the more serious the felony. And like you were saying, they go from F1 down to F6. And I put together for you, and then I'm at home now, I left it in the office, a listing of some of the four, five and six crimes. Chief, you may have a handle on, what's an example of four, five and six? I can tell you something, he's decided to go away. I can tell you that some of the lower level felonies are not lower level crimes. I know there's some lower level child sex exploitation or assault cases that fall in there that would be summons only. Chief, any other summons only, four, fives and sixes?
Yeah, fleeing and eluding a police officer would, would be, would only be a citable violation. Failure to register as a sex offender is a citable violation. No arrest can be made on that. I think burglary is one of those that we wouldn't make an arrest, we'd write a citation for. So I have your list that you sent me, Judge, and it was pretty encompassing. I just don't remember it off the top of my head, but those were a few that stuck out that, you know, were certainly seems like people we would want to intercept their activities and, and change their behavior, but that's a couple.
And Mayor, I think there's some movement. I'm on a legislative liaison committee. I think there's some movement to bring the the level lower with felonies and add some level four felonies to the can take into custody and book list. And Chief, I think some kidnappings are F4s. I swear, I think robbery is an F4, that doesn't make sense. But
Yeah, I don't remember robbery on there, but I have the list, I'm sure you do too. We could send it out. It's certainly, it's certainly shocking when you read about what we, what you might expect us to show up to your house and arrest somebody for, and then the judge to take action that we, we really can't in, under this bill if it passes.
Any other, any other questions for the judge? Well, Judge, I'd like to thank you for coming in tonight. We'll, we've got a legislation being drafted to move this down the process. So Patrick, is this due on next week's, next week calendar? Is that what you said?
It is, yes. First, first reading on the
Next week?
And then public hearing on the 24th of May.
Okay. All right, there's no more questions. We will thank you, Judge, for, for coming in. We appreciate your service.
Thank you. See you next week.
Thanks a lot. We will now go to agenda item number, number two. This is our strategic plan, work plan.
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Tonight we would like to start discussing with you and getting some direction and consensus on our strategic priorities that city council came up with back on, on May 20, or February 20th, 30. As for the public that's listening, if, as a reminder, city council did meet, they masked up and met on February 20th for our annual strategic planning retreats. Unfortunately, we had to cancel last year, last March because of COVID. But council was anxious to get back and, and in the same room with everybody and look at priorities for the next, next couple of years. And as, as a reminder, you all came up with eight new priorities for the next couple of years and those all go back to the, the vision statement for the city, the city's vision 2035 statement. And that vision is Wheat Ridge is an attractive and inviting city and community for families. Wheat Ridge has great neighborhoods, is a hub of commerce with a choice of economically viable commercial areas and has diverse transportation. Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship and its residents enjoy an active, healthy lifestyle and are proud of their hometown. So we, we obviously try to look back at that every year and, and to set our goals and priorities for the, the coming years. So the eight strategic priorities that came out of the retreat were broken down into two different categories. The first category is discrete new tasks. Those are tasks we, we think we can fairly easily include into our current work plan. And those four include, number one, these are in ranked order based on how city council ranked them. The first item is new efforts in engagement of community in government and understanding of city processes. And we will speak about that priority this evening. Ally Scheck is the lead staff member on that one. Implement bulk plane in all residential zone districts. And we'll also speak about that priority this evening. And Ken Johnstone is the staff lead on that. Reexamine and advance sidewalks on 38th Avenue. We have that not scheduled right now, but we're looking at probably third or fourth quarter of this year to bring that back to city council. Review the mission, vision, mission and funding of local works. We do have that scheduled, I think, coming up in June, June 21st. And the next category of priorities were major new undertakings. These are, are bigger items that are going to take more city council direction and discussion and staff time to make them happen. And those four items are streamlining the permit process, processes. We have that scheduled for May 10th. Commercial corridor, and I'm sorry, that is streamlined and Ally Scheck is, is the lead on that one again. Commercial corridor code review. Chief Murtha's lead on that one. And we have that scheduled for third or fourth quarter of this year. Policy on non-conforming accessory dwelling units. Ken Johnstone is the lead on that. And we have that scheduled for third or fourth quarter of this year. Then homelessness and wraparound services. Myself and Mary Anne are the lead on that. And we do have that scheduled for May 17th when we're also bringing in heading home to give a presentation on, on what they are doing around the homelessness issue. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to, first, we have, let's see, who's up first in my agenda here? So I guess Ally, Ally Scheck to talk about what we're doing currently to engage our community. And also what some plans that we have in the future and then also get some, just some general consensus from city council if this is, if this is what you had in mind when you added this to your priority list. So with that, Ally?
Thank you so much, Mr. Goff, Mayor and City Council. I'm Ally Scheck, administrative services director, and I have brought some reinforcements. We have the A team here this evening. We have Ashley Holland, our neighborhood engagement specialist. We have Sarah Spaulding, the city's communications manager. We have Mary Ann Schilling, who is involved in all kinds of things. And as you know, partnered with local works and was the city's lead on Wheat Ridge 101. And I know that Lauren Nikulak is also there if we need her as well. So let's get started. I have a brief presentation for us to review. So I'm going to start by sharing my screen. Hopefully everyone can see that. Can I get a nod? Thank you, Mayor. Awesome. So we are talking about community engagement and education. And so just to share sort of the notes with you, these were the notes that, that between staff, your, the survey that you took prior to the retreat and those flip charts, this is what we, we captured about this priority. So implement community building initiatives, increase community understanding of city functions, get the community involved in city programs, new efforts of engagement, Wheat Ridge 101, track development progress, increase civic involvement and communicate how we communicate with the community. So from that, I will come back to this at the very end. So what are my little agenda here is we're just going to talk a little bit about what our current understanding of your priority is. We're going to talk about work that we've already got underway. Planned upcoming activities and then some new ideas. And at the end, we're going to ask for your direction. Did we understand you correctly? And what do you think of our thoughts and our, and our work plan? Okay. So our understanding of what you're looking to accomplish based on all that is to continue efforts. Gosh, I got that wrong on the slide, to educate the community about how their local government works and to broaden community engagement in city processes. So let's start with the work that we already have underway. We've got, I've broken this down into three areas, communications, community engagement, and then legislative action. So starting with communications, and again, Sarah Spaulding's here this evening and when, when we have some discussions, she'll be there to answer some questions. We have, the city has a robust communication strategy. It's multifaceted. And the approach is to distribute information widely among varied stakeholders and through various mediums. So that of course includes media connections, which is an important piece because that's the piece that gets delivered into every Wheat Ridge mailbox four times a year. We have obviously a fully functional website with a mobile web app that launched in December of last year. We have a monthly email newsletter that we call Mayor's Matters that sort of aggregates a lot of news. We obviously have an integrated social media plan. We use Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor across sort of city government, police specific content and parks and recreation. We have a pretty robust video program, including obviously Channel 8, but YouTube, YouTube Live. And then of course, other videos that we distribute through various mediums. And then of course partnerships, and those are really important to us. One of our main partners is Local Works. We rely on Local Works and we rely on other local organizations to share information with their audiences and with their members. Local Works really amplifies the city's message thanks to its growing network of engaged residents and businesses. Community engagement, and again, Ashley's here tonight, which is exciting. And you know, 2020 sure was a challenging year, but I'll tell you, we really grew in this area. It was an incredible year for, for the city in terms of our work and community engagement. So, you know, the city certainly has a long history through the years of engaging residents, particularly over planning and development issues. But last year, we grew leaps and bounds. Prior to the pandemic, we had just launched our community involvement strategy. And that speaks to the importance and the significance of educating, consulting and involving our residents and stakeholders in city processes and decision-making. And that strategy is included in your packet. So, you know, staff talked about how community engagement is not one person's job. So we were really fortunate, we got to hire Ashley to lead a very specific program, at least initially for this first couple of years, and that's Let's Talk. But if we're going to do community engagement well, it has to be part of our culture and it has to be part of our work. And so we formed a cross-functional team across the city, not just departments, but functional areas. It also includes local works. It's led by Ashley Holland. And we call this the Community Involvement Task Force. This fairly new team meets monthly. And right now they are, they're incredible. They're sharing all kinds of information with each other about processes and work that we're doing around the city. And they're building skills in community engagement specifically. Ashley's starting to work on lining up guest speakers to come in and, and really educate us about specific audiences and helping remove their barriers to participation. So this is, this is a really great group. They all have access to International Association of Public Participation, IAP2. It's a bit of a mouthful, those resources. And again, they're building skills right now. So in 2020, we launched What's Up Wheat Ridge? And that's our online community engagement space. We launched it with Wadsworth, the Wadsworth Improvement Project with the census. And then of course, some of our COVID work became important on there. We've, we've now had several successful projects appear on What's Up Wheat Ridge. It launched in February. We now have over a thousand registered participants and we've received over 9,000 site visits. This is a powerful tool. Every time we launch a project and someone registers, we then have a way to reach out to them again about other things that they may be interested in, if that makes sense. So that's going really well. In late 2019, the Community Development Department launched Wheat Ridge Speaks. You're very familiar with that. I won't go into too much detail on that. Needless to say, the city has posted over 70 meetings on that platform. And we've received over 4,000 unique visitors, 239 written comments as of when this was put together. And I guess I will mention for those watching, Wheat Ridge Speaks is a way for residents and stakeholders to submit public comment on council and planning commission items. I won't go into too many details about Let's Talk because you're very familiar with that. But as you know, that's well underway now in the third and fourth neighborhoods. You, you also know that the city and local works partnered together to launch Wheat Ridge 101 in 2020. The six-week program was highly successful and we're planning to launch it again this September. And then finally, Local Works again is an important component of our community engagement work thanks to their sort of boots-on-the-ground events and the ways that they connect with residents and businesses. And the final group there that I mentioned was legislative action. And this is just a reminder for you all that last year, you took official action. And this is just a reminder for you all that last year, you took official action on increasing the radius requirements for public posting of land of quasi-judicial cases. And you similarly increased the signage requirements as well. So that's something that you did last year. Let's talk a little bit about planned upcoming activities. Later this year, the city will redesign our website, hopefully launching in early of twenty, early twenty twenty-two. We're very excited about that. That's through the partnership with our vendor Civic Plus. We're looking forward to actually turning in this into a community engagement opportunity and working with the public through focus groups and tests. And, you know, having them actually sort of drive the website and and look at how they're searching to help us really improve it. So we're excited about that. That's firmly in Sarah's court. They can, will continue to implement Let's Talk. And Ashley can later on, if you have any questions, speak further about that. As I mentioned, Wheat Ridge One Is One Oh One will launch again in September. And then something that Sarah had mentioned that's really interesting in the Chiefs here that we've added to sort of work underway or planned upcoming activities is this new real focus on relationship-based policing in the police department. This model encourages frequent interaction internally within the PD with other city departments and, of course, externally with the public to create a real trusting and open dialogue that serves to identify and address the needs and concerns of this community. So at the moment, I believe we're in some planning and training stages internally. And this is exciting. And all of this, if you can see, will sort of fit together, I think, as we, as we go further along this road. And so now for the fun stuff, we have some ideas that we wanted to get your buy-in or thoughts on this evening for new activities to support your very important priority. And as you can tell, I'm really passionate about this. So is Sarah, so are Ashley and Mary Ann and Lauren. And there's a lot of us here at the city that are just thrilled that this is a priority for you. So here we go. One of the things we'd like to do is create an onboarding program for you all and for appointed officials. So all of our boards, commissions, committee members and our elected officials, we want to make sure that we give you a toolkit and your colleagues a toolkit of ways that the community can get involved and how we can actually communicate with, you know, how how they can get involved, how we communicate, what they should be subscribing to. And actually, I have slides for each of these. So this is the little preview, onboarding program, development map, expanded notification requirements, a demystifying government video series, I bet you can't wait to hear more about that, and an annual get-involved mailer. So I was, as I was saying, the onboarding program, an easy-to-use toolkit to promote our communications channels. We think we can do this next year in twenty twenty-two. We don't think we need any resources to accomplish that. We think we have everything we need right here. Interactive development sort of construction map. You'd mentioned this at the retreat and we agree that it's a great idea. In fact, it's something that staff in community development have been asking for for quite some time. This is an external-facing, interactive, GIS-based map. Other communities, our neighbors have them. Ours will be better. It'll be great. This will identify on a map. So if someone's driving down the road and they see something going on, they can, in theory, click on that location and find out more about it. So it would be used to tell the public more about land use cases, development activities, construction projects, that sort of thing. It'll identify activity and progress through to completion. Again, we think we can do this in twenty twenty-two, but it will require some resources. So this is something to consider. We'd like to discuss tonight if this is interesting to you. If so, we can certainly bring it, start to work on it, gather costs and estimates. But we know that it will require an additional FTE. We currently have one person dedicated to GIS. And we have an intern or a part-time employee. What we would do, and if you, if you look in past budgets, you'll see a GIS technician on the five-year staffing plan for quite some time. This has been necessary regardless. As I'm sure most of you know, GIS work is getting more and more and more important to more and more people and functions, both internally and to the public. And so this, this, for the maintenance of this, will certainly require us making that a priority and and bringing, you know, upping that to a full-time technician. And then we will likely need some consultant funding initially to to create the tool. So again, this could be a twenty twenty-two budget item. And we look forward to your feedback on that. Contingent on that, community development could, could then, if that were to occur, if the, if the interactive map were to occur, come back to you with ideas for further expansion of your notification requirements within the code. And so that, so some ideas to consider there could be notification upon application submission. And again, you can see why the map would be important. The last thing we want to do is notify someone that something's been submitted, but there's no more information to share, right? Folks want to know, they need to go somewhere to kind of learn more. And the other thing you could consider is including tenants. Currently, notifications only go to property owners. Again, so that could be in twenty-two or twenty-three, depending on if the map is is operationalized. Our, our fourth idea is a video series about, you know, sort of demystifying governments. So these are short and sweet videos. They're fun, they're engaging, and they're on common topics that we hear questions about all the time. So we had some ideas and we'd love to hear yours, too. How is an ordinance made? And what do I do if I want to change a local law? How do I go about that? How do I get involved? How do I navigate the city's tax and licensing rules? We're going to talk a little bit more about that next week. How are decisions made about sidewalks and speed bumps? And how do we get a Trader Joe's? Or for the chief's wife, how do we get an Aldi's? So I just let the cat out of the bag there. Again, this is something that we could do in twenty twenty-two with some minimal funding in the budget. We have an incredible videographer in Jesse and we budget funding for videos. And it could be that we prioritize some of that money here, or it could be we add just a little bit additional to get us across the finish line. And then finally, we propose an annual mailer that goes out to all Wheat Ridge residents about how to get involved. And it serves as a reminder. And there's some different ways to do that. Could be a separate mailer. It could be an insert in our connections. It could be more prominent content in connections. And then, of course, ongoing messaging with sort of a menu of all the ways that you can get and stay involved in your local government. Again, we think we can do that in twenty twenty-two. And depending on the mailer choice, we we may need about five thousand dollars, which, again, we would put into the twenty twenty-two budget. So in conclusion, and just to remind you what we're looking for this evening, we're here to request your feedback and thoughts. We need confirmation as to whether or not we're on the right track. And and as a reminder, are, we think that this is to, we need to continue efforts to educate the community about the, how their local government works and broaden community engagement and city processes. And I have to look at that darn typo again, I'm so sorry. And then here listed are the five new ideas. The onboarding program for elected and appointed members, interactive development construction map, expand notification requirements, demystifying government video series, and the annual get-involved mailer. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen. And we look forward to your questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ally. I'll take questions from council. Ms. Knossler back.
Hey, Ally, would you mind explaining what GIS is just for anybody who who isn't on the, you know, city side of things?
Thank you for saying that. I thought about that and I thought, do I know what that is? I think it's geographic information systems. Am I right about that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's mapping tools that we use to map all kinds of things. And the, the vision with this is it would be a real-time, actual map. So it would look like a map of the city of Wheat Ridge. And if you were driving down, I don't know, well, Clear Creek Crossing is probably a great example, right? You're heading on, you know, west on I-70 and like, what is going on over there? I mean, in theory, you could pull up that map. There'll be a link on our website and click on a spot and it would pull up the activity and tell you, you know, and tell you more about what's going on. Thank you for that, Councilor Beck.
And maybe to add to that, too, a little bit, and Ken, Ken might be able to help with this a little bit. But I think we got really into GIS maybe fifteen years ago in Wheat Ridge. And before that time, we were really relying on maps and documents from the county level. But as Ally mentioned, we only have one full-time person and and they've been asking for, for help for for many, many years. And I kept saying no, but I think there, there's more need for it now. And there's many layers in the GIS system that has all of our roads and streets and utilities and signs and and parks and facilities. And it's just kind of a, an inventory of all of our infrastructure in the city and and developers use it. And the city obviously uses it, staff uses it daily. So it's a, it's a terrific tool. I don't know if Ken, do you have anything to add to that?
You know, the only thing I'd add is just that the, the, the great thing about GIS is it's not just a map, like in the traditional sense. That's kind of a static sort of thing. It's a, it's linked to all sorts of different data. And so it's a really powerful tool in terms of being able to do, you know, what we'd call queries. So to basically ask questions of the data from multiple different layers and get, you know, kind of an analytical approach to looking at things. So it's a really powerful to, tool. We actually have a pretty robust amount of data in there for a city of our size. But I think to, to, to use it more creatively and more actively is where it gets more time-intensive and why, you know, we really think we need that additional support position.
And let me ask you, just sitting on Dr. Cog, Dr. Cog has a number of GIS resources. And would those be able to sort of augment this new position, that kind of data?
It could be, Mayor. I, I need to check what, every organization has a little bit different data-sharing policy. So I, I'm not intimately familiar with what Dr. Cogs is as a regional entity. I'm sure they're interested in sharing data. So yes, I, you know, I think that there are opportunities there as well.
Ms. Weaver and then Ms. Hoppy.
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation, Ally. I just wanted to say how much I support getting another GIS person. I actually teach geographic information systems and geospatial science. And, and, and this is just a really key piece that, that, like, I believe, Mr. Johnstone or Mr. Graff were saying, that developers use, that cities use, that police departments use. And it really helps people answer spatial questions. And having another person on board at the city, especially to have a GIS system that could reach out and people could answer their own questions by interacting with something, I think, would be extremely powerful and, and save a lot of time on the city side. So, so I think the, the cost benefit of adding this kind of technol, or, or making it more robust is really beneficial in the long run. And just to give you an example, I, I often use the Jeffco site for, for looking up information. That's all a GIS-based site with different layers that you can see parcels and, and imagery and things like that that, that allow people to answer some basic questions about their property and their taxes. And, and, and this would allow us to drill in a little bit more succinctly on the, on the city level. And I think that would, that would really help, help constituents, especially when we connect it with something like Wheat Ridge Speaks. As, as planning goes forward and as developments are happening and just, just all of the communication right now that I know is going through several people when people have questions about construction and things like this. So I'm, I'm really supportive of this. Thank you, Ally, for the presentation.
Oh, it's a team effort. Thank you, Council Weaver.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy, and then Ms. Dozeman and then Ms. Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a, a quick question, and maybe this is for Ken. But when we did the, increased the letter notice radius from three hundred to six hundred feet for all the properties, is that, is, and Ally said something about we, it's, it goes to property owners. But if there's an apartment complex within that radius, does it go to each one of the, does it go to every address or just to the owner of the complex?
Yeah, for, what, what we're suggesting is it, it goes to the owner right now, right? And what we're suggesting is that we could consider two things that would expand notification if councils so inclined. One would be to provide an additional time, an additional time when we provide notification. And what we're suggesting is, as Ally outlined, when an application actually gets submitted. So that's one thing that we're, we're suggesting we could do. Right now, we notify people at the very, very start of the process and at the, kind of the end of the process, which is the public hearings. So if we, the suggestion is that you could, after the neighborhood meeting is held, but before, but when, coincident with when an application is actually submitted, would be another appropriate time to give people notice of, hey, that thing that, you know, the, the neighborhood meeting might have been six months ago. And then they finally get around to submitting. So that's one notification improvement that we, we want to consider. And then the other one is, is notifying tenants as part of our, all of our notification requirements, whether that be a commercial tenant or a residential tenant. That would be an, an expansion that, that could be beneficial as well.
Thank you. I have Ms. Dozeman, Ms. Holtein, and then Ms. Hoppy.
Councilmember Hoppy, did you have a follow-up question for that?
I did, thanks, Ms. Dozeman. So while I, I agree with the, the new suggestion for the new notification, I would hope, I guess I was under the impression that any person who lived within six hundred feet would get the information of what was happening down the street from them, whether they're a renter or a property owner. So that would be my bad for not understanding that clearly when we changed that. I think that is absolutely important that we include the voices of tenants. And, and it also will give us a more diverse and inclusive conversation. So is that something that we need to wait to do? Or is that something that, if given direction by city council, we can change that? And it won't have a major financial impact?
Well, you know, the financial impact is, is essentially just stamps, right? It's, it's not particularly, you know, labor-intensive in terms of notifying tenants. So we could certainly extract that information. So it's not terribly, you know, expensive to do, certainly several thousand dollars a year. It's not, I mean, I, I don't quote me on that, but, but certainly, you know, probably could be easily ten thousand dollars, I would suggest, if not more. But, but certainly very, you know, practical to implement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman and then Ms. Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on the video series, Demystifying Government. I think that that is a wonderful idea. I have found myself having to explain parliamentary procedure and how our meetings are formatted recently. And so I, I feel like maybe that would be a, a good video series as well. You know, how to, how to get involved, how to apply and serve on a, on a border commission, really, you know, get engaged. And so I think that those people that don't interact or participate very often, they don't really know what to expect. So whether that's, you know, speaking at the beginning of a meeting and, and how everything is set up. So I just absolutely love that idea.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I correct, I got this down. So you said the parliamentary procedure is how to serve on boards of governments and then sort of general how to get involved?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to recognize the first part of the presentation with all the things the city's currently doing is just like immensely impressive. And having been working closely on that with the All-America City application, it just, I'm just continuing to be impressed. So kudos, I think we're doing an amazing job with the, with the what we're doing. And I think we have great infrastructure for what we're looking at doing next. And as many of you know, this is a passion of mine. I am a community engagement specialist when I'm not doing this. So, so a couple of thoughts. First of all, I think all of the ideas are really fantastic that are presented in part because they're just touching on different aspects of where we can be expanding, how we're, we're reaching people and how they're reaching us. I think in general, one of the things I really appreciated was the thought, not just like doing more, doing more, but really going into opportunities to expand the why and how. I think a lot of times people have access to information, but they don't necessarily understand the context or their relationship to it. So I really, you know, like Ms. Dozeman just said, the, the video communication series, I think, is really helpful. I think the Wheaties actually did a, a project on that that was, was kind of fun. But yeah, that demystification, and the demystification for those of us who are already But yeah, that demystification and the demystification for those of us who are already serving. Um, I I really love that you opened with creating that toolkit for the people who are already, you know, actively serving. You know, sometimes it feels like one board and commissions over here and, you know, elected officials over here and sort of hubbing that a little bit more. Creates a really strong info- information structure that serves all of us. And then the uh, the other thing, the get involved mailer and ongoing communication. Um, I think that's really strong. I think it's just, it's a reminder and maybe looking at it in such a way that it's sequencing. If we're looking at a once a year mailer and connections, I don't think it should be an either or. I think it maybe should be a little bit more rhythmical in the connections and and like a big dump reminder in a postcard. But then aligning that with an aligned application process for all of our boards and commissions. I think I've mentioned that before, um, so that we can have kind of a communication outreach and bundle. I know we get vacancies throughout the year, but I think it is confusing when we have like four different deadlines for different types of task force and. And things that we could kind of get that, we could have a big festival of civic involvement quarter for the city. Um, and then my last thing, I I love that that Wheat Ridge one oh one is planned again for this year. I think that type of in-depth civic education is just, you know, foundational for our future city counselors. And I I'd love to know sort of, uh, it's good they're offering it again. And I'd be curious, you know, what's what's building off of that, not just repeating it. But is there sort of a a one oh two or some sort of like, uh, you know, like. Is there a civic ambassador program that maybe graduates could look at? Like they could go speak to local, you know, PTAs or school groups or be, you know, civic ambassadors for the city. So it'd be, um, you know, maybe not something we need to see immediately, but if we're going to have repeat one oh ones, it would be really exciting to see what one oh two looks like. So, um, that said, I'm really excited with all these ideas and just continued great work and enthusiasm, Ms. Check. I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Oh, that's because of this amazing group. So we have, like I said, Ashley, Sarah, Lauren, Mary Ann. They're the ones with all the great ideas. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moserback.
Um, as we're talking about the application process for the boards and commissions. While we were working through establishing the equity task force, that was something that came up quite a bit. Was, you know, how we're doing that outreach. And and so I'm just wondering if there's a way, and I see that Mary Ann's on here as well. So sorry to kind of put you on the hot spot there. But if there's a way, um, to do that thing that's really hard to do sometimes in government, which is like, you know. Makes make all the pieces work together at the same time, like while we're putting together this plan. How are we also maybe seeing how the Equity Task Force can, um, help inform? How we're how we're going about establishing some of these new processes or programs? So I just throwing that out there as an idea.
Mary Ann, do you have anything?
Um, sure. I will say that one of the great things that's already happened is coming out of the Community Involvement Task Force. Ashley, as part of the Let's Talk Program, has already reached out to the RISN Equity Task Force to to get contacts for them moving forward in the Let's Talk Program. So we're already inter- intermingling, um, but I I do think it's a great idea to see how we can align things moving forward. So we'll we'll see what we can do there.
Okay, so government except for Wheat Ridge where we already do that. We're different, more than you bargained for. We think that could be our new tagline. Just kidding. But in also, but we should go through and do a little bit of evaluation. As you know, boards and commissions onboarding, not just onboarding, but recruitment is a real, has been a real focus. That, um, Sarah Spalding and Denise Sosa have been, um, and and this group, actually, we just recently had a liaison's call when we started talking more about this. But working harder and smarter, really smarter, I think, on on getting the word out. So we should, we should actually look at the Wheat Ridge one oh one graduates and new applicants for boards and commissions and see how that aligns. Um, I haven't looked at the data. I'm not sure if if Mary Ann has, but that was a specific, you know, targeted outreach that we did. And I think that's what you're describing, Councilor Back, is like you said, let's make sure all of these things work together.
Additional questions or discussions on this item? Great, great topic, great work, Ally, to sort of put this all together. We have a lot going on. Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier, I mentioned that I did attend the SCL meeting on Saturday. And I did hear from quite a few people who were there that their neighbors didn't know that this was going on. I am wondering as far, not everybody has a computer, right? Hey, and so, um. Also, I don't know if you can pick up the transcript somewhere or it's just by subscription or whatever now. I am wondering when events are coming up like this, if there couldn't be a posting. Maybe at the Active Adult Senior Center or at the Rec Center. Anderson Building, if people are going to be going in there and they actually can just see things that are, would be posted. That they could just read if you would like for the community to attend these events. And then they would, people who frequent these places often. Would be able to just read what's coming up. You know, and could see for themselves if they don't have a computer or they don't read the paper or whatever. You know, that's just another way of getting the information out. Also, like with SCL, the the meetings that that was held. If there was just a sign posted like outside of the facility, that there is going to be this event. You know, community welcome. That's just, uh, because it's right on thirty eighth, a lot of people drive by there and they could read the sign. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hoppy.
To follow up a little bit with what Councilwoman Hutchinson was saying, I do think that there is a value in hand bills. You know, at the Rec Center and the Active Adult Center. And and if we have, you know, some some posters there, then, you know, we're not necessarily being. Non-ego conscious if we only just pick a select few places. But also oftentimes when there's large construction, um, jobs happening. There's a job board at the front of where the construction is. And that's typically where you find the permits are posted, the safety information, the contact supervisor contact information and that kind of stuff. So perhaps we could consider doing like Ms. Hutchinson was saying, something kind of like a job board. On larger projects for people who are maybe on foot and and walking around. And I just wanted to say, I I support all of the ideas and thoughts for the for moving forward. And appreciate all of the work that has been done since late two thousand nineteen up to date. On on this topic. So thank you to the whole team.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hoppy. Uh, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A suggestion that has come up a couple of years ago. That I think if I remember correctly, Councilwoman Wooden was really passionate about was. Uh, an electronic sign in front of City Hall or some equivalent space in front of the Rec Center. That's a great way of communicating to a significant portion of our population. Key things like a Lutheran Legacy Meeting. I don't know if that's something that is still under consideration or could be considered. But, um, you know, we have, I can't remember, but we have a lot of cars on Wadsworth and or Kipling every day. So that's a, that's a possibility to to be considered for sort of timely reminders of a variety of civic activities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hoppy.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, before, it sounds like we're kind of wrapping up. And so before we move on to two B, I just wanted to ask two questions. One, does anyone in council feel uncomfortable with any of the things moving forward? And and if so, we can have discussion about that, but if not, we can give direction for for our team to continue to move forward with that. Well, I guess I'll wait to see if anyone has anything to say about. Please, please.
We had, we had about five items, if I recall, sort of action items that you wanted to move forward on. And and any, any objections to sort of moving forward in all of that, all of those items?
And just a gentle direction, right? Did we, did we hear you right?
You did. I I believe you did. So we've got nodding heads. Okay.
And then I just had one other thing before we change topics. And and so I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask for a consensus that we, um, move forward now. With including renters in our notification process. And so what that'll mean is if we can come with a consensus today, then we can, we can get that scheduled on to regular meetings. And get that a first and second reading. So, um, I'd like to ask for consensus that we add rental properties in our notification of six hundred feet. Um, and that's for our current, um, notification requirements for quasi judicial public hearings.
I have a, I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Urban.
So is that, you're suggesting that this consensus would would allow us to bring forward an ordinance to allow for those notifications to occur? Or that you want city staff to make those notifications occur to tenants moving forward from today?
It would make a change to the current ordinance.
Got it. Okay.
Is that true, Ken? Will that, will that have to be in ordinance?
Um, I might lean on Lauren if I might to see. I think we've talked about this a little bit in terms of whether we could do this without an ordinance. Or if it definitely requires an ordinance.
Sure. Yeah, we could. Um, there's two things. So when it comes to public notice, we kind of live and breathe by the code just so that we are consistent. We could probably enforce this earlier by adopting a policy that clarifies the intent. Well, we can double check what the postage would be. It will probably double what the postage amount is currently associated for any public hearing. Tenants are notified of neighborhood meetings. That's where the disconnect has been, that the, that same property right hasn't been extended when it comes to the decision-making point in time. So we can do it, we can do it immediately or we can confirm that we don't also need a budget supplemental. Um, I would definitely amend the code moving forward so that we are doing this in perpetuity, um, in the code.
Um, yeah, go ahead, Denise. Ms. Hoppy.
Oh, I'll I'll let Mr. Urban ask his question first.
Yeah, I I'll I'll just defer until we have a larger discussion on this because there's some thoughts I had on that. But I'll I'll defer until we discuss this in greater detail.
So, um. So I'm I'm going to ask for it to come to a study session. So if we, if I can get someone to support me to bring this to a study session.
So let's, uh, we'll put this item on a study session, uh, in the in the near future. And, uh. Have a discussion about that topic then. Okay? Any other, uh, any other direction on, on two A that we're looking for, Mr. Goff? What do you think, and Ally, do you think we're? Got it. Got it pretty well.
Thank you for.
Moving, moving down the, down the path.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks. Thanks, team.
Yeah, and just, yeah, thanks. Thanks to everybody, all the staff who came in and ju- just for councils. For council, this, you know, this isn't the end of it, obviously, right? And this is a priority for the next, uh, couple of years. And and so we'll be coming back to you as needed to provide updates and on different items that were that were presented this evening.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Thank you for that discussion and thank you for your work on that. We will go to item number two B, which is implementing the bulk plane in all residential zone districts. So, um, Mr. Goff.
Turn it over to Mr. Johnstone, the case, the athlete on this one.
Okay, Mr. Johnstone.
Just pulling up a PowerPoint.
All right, we've got your.
Okay.
The slides are up.
Great. Well, this was, this fell under the category of discrete new tasks and it in fact can be treated as such. And we'll talk through some of those options at the end of the meeting. We actually had some of these discussions about a citywide approach to implementation of the bulk plane back in two thousand sixteen. When we adopted it on a more limited geographic scale, and I'll show you some maps to that effect. But for tonight, um, just a few slides, kind of a high level discussion of, you know, what bulk plane regulations are. When and how the city has adopted our current bulk plane regulations, where bulk plane currently applies, where it could apply. Uh, and an example or two of some actual real, uh, real world, uh, projects out there that were impacted by the bulk plane. So what is bulk plane? I guess I'll start with what it isn't perhaps. Historically, we've, we've regulated residential development in some fairly traditional ways. A maximum lot coverage, so the maximum amount of your maximum percentage of your lot that can be covered with structures. A maximum building height, which is actually for residential zone districts, it's thirty five feet across the city in all residential districts. And then setbacks. So what, how far does the structure need to be from the perimeter of your of your property? What bulk plane does is add us a a little more nuance to that, and it's a diagonal measurement. So, uh, we, it's essentially taking that diagonal measurement from a point on the property line. Up at a forty five degree angle and saying that you cannot build, it's kind of essentially creating a no build zone. So what that practically means is that as you go up in height, uh, to say a third story, you're going to have to have a greater setback. Quite a bit of history back in two thousand sixteen, when we initially, council ultimately in November of that year adopted bulk plane regulations. Uh, you can see we had a number of study sessions and this was all preceded by by staff earlier in that, in that year doing some research. And what we determined is that most communities surrounding us had some, some form of a bulk plane regulation. So Denver, Arvada, Lakewood and Edgewater all had some sort of bulk plane regulation. So it seemed very appropriate. And at the time, we were seeing a lot of infill development in East Wheat Ridge. And, uh, we're getting some pushback from the community and we were certainly sensitive to that, which is why we initiated this, this research and this discussion with city council. Ultimately, that culminated, um, in the adoption of the bulk plane regulations by ordinance in November of that year. And and just by way of example, the graphic, the image on this slide is a house that was constructed pre-bulk plane. And I'll have some more images on subsequent slides as well. So it's contained in the zoning code, of course, as you might guess, twenty six, six forty two, uh, which was attached in your packet. Uh, defines bulk plane and it applies it, applied it at the time, uh, in, in for single family homes. In R one C and R three zone districts. And we can show you an image of of where those, where that zoning designation is prevalent. But before we do, uh, I'll show you two structures, right? One that you've seen that was built, um, in two thousand fifteen prior to bulk plane. And then an example of something that was built, uh, in two thousand seventeen after the bulk plane ordinance was adopted. You can see some of the, some of the impacts of that, right? You can see that the third story on that two thousand seventeen house is further setback. I think if you look at the right side of that image, you know, you can kind of ballpark it. But, um, the typical setback for that property would be five feet. But you can see that by the length of that fence, um, that it's closer to between ten and fifteen feet for those, for that, from the property line. Because they wanted to go up to that third story. And then you can see on the left side that they've, they've, they've stepped back the second floor as well. So these are, I mean, this is the the practical impact of this. I think it does what's intended, which is really redo kind of the, reduce the mass and the scale of taller buildings. So this is the zone districts in the city that are R one C and R three. And again, for R three, it only applies to single family homes and duplexes in R three. It doesn't apply to multifamily development. So you can see that it's a very common, uh, those are very common zoning designations on the east side of town, but but not exclusively the east side of town. There certainly, uh, exist elsewhere. If you take a look at all of our residential zoning districts, you can see it's the vast majority of the city. So a citywide bulk plane approach would 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 apply, um, to a lot of residential properties in the city. So we're here tonight really to talk to you about whether you want to apply bulk plan citywide. You said you did, but we're just kind of reaffirming that, that answer. If, if it's that simple, we can make it that simple and bring forward an ordinance really in the next month or two. It would require a recommendation from the planning commission. And then city council would need to do a, a first and second reading. We, we continue to think it makes sense. We don't think it's going to have a big impact on larger lots. With the exception of non-conforming lots that might be undersized for their, their zoning designation or structures that could have been built prior to the city's incorporation that might have structures that are located in a, in a location on our property that is in violation of a setback and potentially in violation of a future bulk plane regulation. So those are the, the kind of minor impacts, but in general, we think that because the bulk plane regulations will have a much less impact on larger lots, that it's a, it's a logical thing to do on a citywide basis. So we can also talk more about this. You know, this has been kind of a high level overview of the topic. We could certainly bring back more detail, more examples. You know, more discussion about other geographic locations in the city and what the impacts would be. But alternatively, we could simply move forward with an ordinance that would apply the section 642 citywide and bring that through the planning commission and city council, public hearing process. And with that, I will, will take comments.
All right. Why don't you stop sharing your screen so that we can get the, get the full view here of council and I'll start with Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for this presentation, Mr. Johnstone. In 2016, I was a major driver for bulk plane. And the, the problem that it solved was that we want to be able to have new housing and diverse housing in our community, but we also want to try to kind of keep the character of our community. And that's, that's what bulk planes solve. Our one C lots are the very smallest residential lots that we have. We have R1As and Bs. And then we have the R and the R3s, which actually tend to also, even though they're R3, tend to also be smaller lots. So in 2016, I supported this going all residential. And the staff had recommended it then also. And I still support this going in all residential. This is a, as you can see in the memo, we've had four study sessions on it, but that was in 2016. So if you, so if, if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer questions. And I just want to say that I really fully support this as a, as a way to solve for X. X being we don't want Wheat Ridge to become like a 44th and Tennyson. So I really support this and I'm happy that it filtered up to priorities. And I just thank all of the council who voted for it when we were at the retreat.
Thank you. And Ms. Dozeman, and then this whole team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I really struggle with kind of a one size fits all for all residential areas. I spoke about this shortly after being elected. Because I don't think that, I, I think that this was applicable in the areas that it has already been designated to. But I thought and or felt that we kind of went into these neighborhood engagement meetings in, in hopes to figure out what neighborhoods felt were applicable to them and what they want, wanted to look like. And, you know, District Four has a lot larger lots. And I think to just kind of have this a blanket policy is, would be really challenging in the city. And, you know, we had talked about district overlay zones and various other options to bulk plane, just implementing bulk plane all across the board. And so I guess one of my questions for Mr. Johnson would be like, if there's, if there's a much larger property like this, this still applies no matter how tall, right? So like the bulk plane, the, sorry, I can't hear you.
No, I'm, I'm just going to ask for clarification. I'm not sure I understood your question.
So, so it doesn't, it doesn't really take into account the lot size. It, it only takes into account the height of the building.
Right, right. So we'd, we'd calculate or the definition of bulk plane is such that, you know, we go up 15 feet on the, on the property line and then do that 45 degree angle. So we would have that same methodology for how we define the restricted area on larger lots. So it would, because the lots are larger and in, in many cases, in some of those other zoning districts, the, the setbacks are larger too, right? So if you're in our one zoning district, your side setback is already 15 feet. So again, as I mentioned earlier, unless there's a non-conforming structure or that, that the, the bulk plane wouldn't have any effect because you're already at that side setback.
Okay. And have there been any recent projects that, that have gone up that, like in areas, I, I guess I'm specifically wondering about the 44th Avenue project over near Tabor. Right, right behind that one that's on, on 44th. Did, did they have to follow bulk plane or did they?
They did not. So the, there's, there's two projects there. They're kind of integrated and it's the same builder. But one was zoned R3, but for in R3, it only applied, applies to single family homes and duplexes. And the other was a PRD. So it was a planned residential development. And so they created their own development standards as part of that rezoning process. So it didn't, didn't apply.
So and was that because it was undeveloped land for R3 that it wasn't necessarily a single family home that was being scraped and built?
Well, the, the, the policy decision when bulk plane was adopted in 2016 was just that the, the intent of the bulk plane regulations are really to, to, you know, impact single family homes principally that we were seeing have, you know, more mass into them. It wasn't necessarily intended to impact multifamily development for properties that were zoned for that type of a use.
So if this were to be extended to all residential zones, would it only be to single family homes as opposed to multifamily?
That would be our recommendation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whole Team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this is an issue that a lot of people in our community care a lot about and has been in front of council for, in various iterations for years. I definitely support moving forward with it being something that we take a look at. I would, I would strongly support doing it as a study session. And my reason for that is in looking at the data that was provided in the packet that community planning put together. There's a clear interest in these type of regulations in our neighborhoods. And I'm very committed to protecting the quality of our neighborhoods. But there was also a lot of don't know and confusion. And I think a little bit of a longer process would give us the opportunity to make sure people understand what it is, what, that we're talking about with, you know, with bulk plane and what these regulations are. Though I know that that's a little bit more onerous, but I think a study session, so we have an opportunity to engage people and hear from them a little bit more just to make sure everyone's on the same page. When I sat in on the let's talk, there was, there was oftentimes a lot of confusion about bulk plane in commercial versus residential. What does it mean? So I would just, I would support moving forward, but ensuring that we have a study session in there so that there's a little bit more opportunity for dialogue and outreach before moving forward with an ordinance.
Mr. Stites and then Ms. Weaver and then Ms. Nosler back.
Thank you, Mr. Marin. Thank you, Ms. Hulte. And actually, I think that's a great idea because I was kind of torn between Ms. Dozeman and Ms. Hoppy beforehand, honestly. I, I do support the bulk lane. I think it's a, a good idea. And I think it's a tool that we can use to help solve a lot of problems. But I do think that part of the NRS and part of the neighborhood engagement tour is to try to not use one size fits all solutions to, to solve things for the whole city. So if there's a, I, I think of going to a study session and, and since the last time this was really come in front of city council and, and, and really been talked about was 2016, which is four or five years ago at this point, it would probably be good for all of us, plus the community to kind of sit down and, and see that again. So I would support that going to a study session and then going forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Um, I do support the bulk plane idea and, but I also like the idea of having a, a little bit longer conversation. I, I just had a question for you, Mr. Johnstone, as far as, or, or, or Ms. Michelak? Sorry, the squares are moving around. What happens if I have, I, I don't happen to have a mid-mod home, but there are several in Wheat Ridge with flat roofs. And, and I want to modify it according to the architectural emphasis of, of the, the house. That would be the one style that I would think the bulk plane might not be appropriate to. But what, how would that be interpreted if I had a flat roofed mid-mod house that I wanted to bring up a level? Would the bulk plane require me to have a peaked roof or what might that look like? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, it would not require that. We, we actually, in the context of adopting the bulk plane back in 2016, and you know, fully acknowledge that's five years ago. But there was some discussion amongst council and at the planning commission about, you know, adopting more kind of nuanced architectural requirements. And council at the time was not inclined to do that. So the visual graphic that we showed with the peaked roof was just, you know, I think a design choice made by that builder. The bulk plane doesn't really significantly lead you toward that building form. It, it could, you know, on the margins, but, but generally speaking, you know, wouldn't have more or less impact on a flat roofed house than it would on a picture of house.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Nosler back.
Um, thanks, Mayor. My question is just about the non-conforming buildings. So with this, and it sounds like we're going to probably take this to a study session and discuss it more. But would we then can like have the conversation about non-conforming and bulk plane? When we have the other conversation about non-conforming? I feel like I just said non-conforming six times. But I, I'm, did you count Steve? Thanks. I, I just want to make sure that, that, that we're coming back around and there's like guidance on how we're dealing with non-conforming buildings. Um,
Yeah, sorry. Sorry to interrupt. Ms. Nosler back, the, the, I think, you know, there's another item on your strategic plan. And, you know, we've, Patrick summarized that we're, you know, looking to get back with you on that topic later in the year. And that's non-conforming accessory dwellings. I think it's a, it's a different topic. I think the way non-conforming structures would, would come into play relative to the bulk plane would be, and, and this, this could happen in R1C and R3 under the existing framework as well, is that you, you have an existing house that is, let's say it's right at the five foot minimum and someone wants to add on, pop the top and maybe significantly pop the top. Maybe they want to put a, a third, you know, two stories or, or maybe it's two stories and they want to go up a third. So, and, and for structural reasons and, and, you know, constructability reasons, people would often want to, you know, stack on top of the existing walls. Because that's, you know, the best way to kind of load, load bear structurally speaking. So in those instances, if you had an existing structure that was built right at that setback line or whatever the distance was, at a distance where the bulk plane kicks into, into play and makes it harder to, to stack right on top of that. Or, you know, again, even in some of the, the larger, larger lot zone districts, that there might be something that, you know, is no longer compliant with what the current setback requirements are because it was built possibly before the city incorporated. So those are the types of examples that we could probably, you know, at a study session dive into a little deeper. I would also point out that, you know, we've, we've thought about that. And, you know, we do also have a fairly robust variance process that properties would be eligible for. So certainly could be circumstances under which you have a scenario like I, I described. And it's, you know, it makes sense for them to apply for some relief through that variance process if they can meet those criteria. So that would be another option that would come into play.
Um, and I have one more question. And this might actually be a question that we talk about when we talk about this issue with ADUs. But if you have to build like structures on your property and you are like judging bulk plane off of two, two, like if you were building on top of each, like, is there a difference in, you can only have a certain height with one building or is, is there any matter there or?
No, the bulk, the bulk plane applies from all property lines the same way. And it applies to primary structures and accessory structures. So it would apply equally to all those scenarios.
Thanks.
Yep.
I'm just a non-conformist. That's why I keep wanting to say.
And if you have a, if you had a house, have a house that would be non-conforming, if this, if this ordinance went into play, what impact would that non-conformance have on your property? I mean, does it, does it impact your, your ability to build something else on your property? Or only if, only if you would exacerbate that encroachment into the bulk plane or?
Yeah, that's kind of the, and I saw Lauren unmuted, so I'll let her speak to this as well. But we do have some exceptions where if you have a non-conforming structure, you're allowed to continue that non-conformity. But Lauren, do you, do you want to elaborate on that? You're probably more intimate with that code language.
Sure. So I think you're asking about a structure that might already exceed the bulk plane if we were to invoke that. So anything that exists right now that wouldn't comply with a new rule would be considered legally non-conforming. And then we would just need to specify if we do move forward with an ordinance, whether the bulk plane would apply to any new additions beyond that. That's how we've been applying it now. And as Ken mentioned, variance is what we talked about, what was it, four years ago? We haven't had that come up at all. So we've had no instances or inquiries so far to, to do an addition on a non-conforming setback that would necessitate a variance or other action. So it, it does feel like it's a big one size fits all, but it's really just solving one thing, which is that the taller a building gets, the further it should be from the property line. So it doesn't feel quite as imposing. And I think most of the folks that we've worked with on the bulk plane, which is again, just a handful, maybe a dozen so far over the last few years, have been fairly understanding of the need to increase the setback accordingly.
As a building, if, if a house that did encroach on the bulk plane now were to be damaged and need to be rebuilt, would that sort of, is that sort of the 50% rule? If it's, if it's damage greater than that, you would, you would come into effect into a new piece of, a new regulation or?
Yeah, the, the code does speak to that. So if something that is non-conforming is involuntarily damaged by a calamity, we don't even have to apply the 50% rule. So they're allowed to rebuild as is within a certain period of time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Additional questions, Ms. Hoppy?
First, I like the word calamity. Love it. I, it sounds like I've been taking notes and it sounds like there is consensus to move it forward to a study session rather than straight to an ordinance. And so unless anybody disagrees with that, I'll ask for consensus to move this to a future study session.
Intentus to bring us back to study session. So if you would work with city manager to make that happen. Do we need any further discussion on agenda item two B? Before we go to not to be.
Now, I think we're good. Sounds like we're good. Thank you. Another great discussion. We'll, we'll put that on a study session.
All right. We'll leave item two B and go to a not to be agenda item number three. And this is a new temporary, this is our staff reports, I guess, by Mr. Mr. Goff. You want to introduce this item?
Yeah, just real quick, Ken Johnstone and I think Lauren will probably both speak to this. But, you, you know, we, we've been, we've been communicating with you fairly well over the last several months that how busy the city is and, and getting. And, you know, I don't, I don't see any slowdown in the near future. Ken's department specifically is, is just, I think it's, he'll tell you here and you've seen in the memo. I think it's the busiest we've ever been since that I've been here and Ken's been here and Lauren. It's, 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 it's pretty amazing what's going on and how much we've been able to. It's 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 pretty amazing what's going on and and how much we've been able to accomplish. And, you know, I've I've been, I haven't told Ken I was gonna say this, but I've been pushing him for several years, honestly, asking him, are you sure you don't need more staff? And, you know, I think they're, they're pretty proud of the amount of work they get done with the staff they have. But Ken's staff pushed him, I think, recently and said, hey, I think we need, it's time. We need some more staff or we're not going to be able to meet our deadlines that we that we advertise. So I'm very supportive of this and and I think Ken's put together a good justification for the need for this this position. And I'll let, I'll turn it over to Ken now.
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. And that's all correct. We, I I don't have the absolute data for you, but I I think it's safe to say, you know, I've been with the city almost fifteen years. And I think this is clearly the biggest first busiest first quarter of of a year that we've ever had when it pertains to building permits. And I won't go over the charts, but we tried to really give you a lot of good information and Lauren pulled that together out of our building records. So we we do a lot of tracking of that. Some of it manual, some of it comes out of our building permit software. But the the tracking suggests that, you know, we've seen a consistent upward tick on building permits over the years, but then more recently in in late twenty nineteen and early twenty twenty, really a kind of a staggering increase from an average a few years back of about at any one time about twenty permits in planners, plan review queue, and now it's closer to sixty. So to Patrick's point, Lauren actually came to me a couple of weeks ago and was expressing that concern and that coming from her planners that are, you know, in in the weeds on issuing building permits. And was suggesting that we might have to back away from our our typical two to four week review time in order to to keep up. And my reaction to that was, well, I don't want to do that. And I'm sorry, there's a, I've got a someone with a vacuum behind me. I'm gonna tell him to stop.
I say, is that Michelle? No, he's in the office, so.
Well, we'll take a, we'll take a short vacuum pause right now.
Sorry about that. The timing never never ceases to amaze me here. Soon I'll probably get kicked off the meeting. So anyway, so what I said to Lauren was, you know, it sounds like it's time for us to get another position. And it it may only be a position that we think we need for a couple of years. But we have a lot of residential permits that are in the pipeline that have been entitled over the last three, four or five years. And we have, you know, plenty of those that haven't been issued permits yet. So we do see this need to to be for at least a year or two, if not, if not a little more. So as as Patrick pointed out, you know, we we have been, we have tried to be fairly conservative when it comes to adding staff. And we, in fact, as a as a planning division, haven't added a position since two thousand seven, when we added a senior planner to do long range planning and then embarked on a series of sub area plans and then a comprehensive plan. So it it just feels like the time has come. And we certainly want to maintain that two to four week turnaround time for residential permits. It's certainly a point of pride for our department. We think that's, you know, better than the vast majority of cities across the front range. And we're proud of that. So that's where we're at. We, again, tried to demonstrate the position in terms of the volume in the staff report and then also talk a little bit about revenues. As councils aware, citywide, we did our revenue estimating fairly conservative in the COVID era. And we we knew we were being very conservative in estimating revenues. And a- as I mentioned in the staff report, you know, based on the trends so far in the first quarter of this year, you know, we conservatively estimate that in building permit revenues alone, we think we'll probably exceed our revenue estimate in the adopted twenty twenty-one budget. You know, conservatively between two hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars. We've estimated that will, you know, will need for the balance of this year, if council supports this, you know, about fifty thousand dollars for this position. And then moving forward, you know, rough numbers, you know, up to a hundred thousand dollars for a full year in twenty twenty-two. So we think the the revenues support that as well. If if council is supportive, we'd we'd like to move this forward quickly in terms of a budget supplemental and get the position out on the street sooner than later so that we can staff this, you know, in in as quickly as possible. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from council? So no, no questions. Is there, Ms. Hoppy?
I'd like to ask for consensus to move forward with the full-time employee for the community development director request.
We have consensus on that. Please raise your hand. Okay, we have consensus on that to move forward with that recommendation. Is there any any further direction that you need on that item at this time?
We don't. Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you very much for for the report. Thanks for the work and working hard on it. So great to, great to have a lot of work going on. Okay. If there's nothing else to do with item number three.
Ms. Mayor, I have a that just two quick updates. Just a reminder, and the and the mayor may say this too, but reminder for public, we have a community meeting next week on homelessness hosted by our mayor, Starker. And this next Tuesday, I believe, May eleventh, starting at six thirty. And it's going to be virtual, so you can find all the information you need on the city's website. And you can leave questions, you can submit questions to an email that's on the website in advance. If you'd like, you can also ask the questions that evening. So we we hope we get a good crowd for that. Also, just real quick, I sent city council an email, I think, I think today, maybe yesterday, about our lifeguard shortage. I didn't want council to get caught off guard and and make sure our public understands too. And it's not not just Wheat Ridge. There's, if you if you do a Google search on lifeguard, lifeguard shortage, it's it's happening across the nation for numerous reasons. I sent you a link to one, one specific article. But we we're gonna open the Anderson Park Pool this Memorial Day weekend. And as you remember, it was closed this last summer because of COVID. And and we want to make sure that we have that open this summer. It's, I think our residents want that open this summer and we're gonna make that happen. So unfortunately, if we can't hire more lifeguards, we're gonna have to adjust our schedule just a little bit at at both the indoor pool, at the rec center and the outdoor pool. But we'll still have both open, but we have implemented a very aggressive recruitment process, including increasing our hourly rate with for lifeguards. We have sign-on bonuses, referral incentives for people who refer folks to us who get hired. So please, if you know anybody and if public's out there listening, please send folks our way who might be interested in being a lifeguard with us this summer. And you can find more information on our website.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
I wonder if Mr. Goff could share with us what the, you've increased the hourly rate. What is the hourly rate?
I hope I get this right. If Ally can back me up right, I believe we're going from the starting pay for lifeguards is thirteen dollars an hour right now. And I believe we're going up to, or we're increasing it at a dollar, I know. So I believe it's going from thirteen to fourteen. And that's that's fairly competitive with our surrounding areas, maybe not with the private sector. But for most public sector municipal pools, that's that's fairly competitive. And we're hearing that other other entities are looking at increasing their rates too.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go to elected officials reports. If you have a report, raise your hand and we'll get that into the record. Okay, let's see, Ms. Holtean, Dozeman and Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Lutheran Legacy Campus event on Saturday and saw a couple of my peers and really enjoyed learning actually more about the campus. And it was a great opportunity to sort of start thinking in a like high level about, you know, what the campus looks like today and what it might look like moving forward. And I just want to say attendance was phenomenal. So kudos to to the city for, you know, getting people there. And I really enjoyed the balance of both soliciting input on, you know, possibilities, but also getting people to think critically about understanding what the campus already is in terms of transportation and scale. And so it was very well done and just kudos to both our staff and the consultants working on it. It was, it was a great, great event. And I will just say, I have a household member who perked up at the lifeguard recruitment email and is very interested. So we might, we might plug one in from this household. So fingers crossed, because we're motivated for those pools to be open. So, all right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Those incentives.
That's right. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the public of this Saturday's porches and patios. It's from ten to two at the Wheat Ridge Historical Society and it's to support their May festival. So I just wanted to invite everybody to to stop by.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I was having issues with my, with my spacebar. Okay, so last week I was a part of the JFCO CTC, that's JFCO Communities that Care Youth Voices event. And it was led by youth interns. These are high school students from Golden, Wheat Ridge and Lakewood High Schools. And there was a ton of amazing, awesome information. They also have some, they're gonna start working on some policy suggestions that they are gonna start talking to area city councils about. But the one thing that I wanted to just bring up for tonight is that they worked on this thing called Twelve Talks and it's twelve talks to have with teens. These are talks made by teens for teens and it's twelve talks dot com. And they have things like talks to have with your teens about prescription drugs, boundaries, friends, marijuana, identity, hopefulness and coping, vape and tobacco, alcohol. So Twelve Talks, if you go to twelve talks dot com, it's an awesome resource for parents of teens. So I just wanted to share that information.
You very much, Ms. Hoppy. Additional elected officials reports. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also enjoyed the Lutheran Legacy Tour Walk, Walkathon. Though I was, had my second vaccine, so I I actually drove to the different locations. I apologize for that. Everybody did a great job, except for the trigonometry question. That, that was the one thing that I I felt a little overwhelmed by. But it was really good practice to figure out how high the building was. And 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 I'm not remembering the young man's name, but he was kind enough to give us the answer while we all sat there and looked at each other. So trying to remember, when, when is it? Ninth grade? Whenever we had it last. But no, the the tour was really great. Mr. Johnstone, thanks for being out there on on Saturday. And it was really nice. So thank you.
Thank you. Additional elected officials reports. All right, well, we'll sort of wrap up our our meeting. I have a couple of things. Mr. Goff noted our May eleventh at six thirty, a community meeting on homelessness. I hope you'll be able to join us. This Saturday, May eighth, I've got coffee with the mayor at nine o'clock. So that's a virtual meeting. I hope if you're able to join us, you can do that. I also went to the Legacy Campus, so I'm glad, or walk around. So I'm glad to see we had a number of our counselors there. I saw Ms. Hutchinson there and it's good that we covered different time slots. So I think that's gonna be a really interesting opportunity for our city. And I'm glad that we are are sort of gathering a lot of public input on that. And I had a really interesting opportunity to join a group called IES at Keller Span Elementary School last Thursday morning and did tree planting with the third and fourth grade classes. And if you don't have an opportunity to get to a school or interact with young people, it's a whole, it's a great experience. And I want to thank them for inviting me and I hope I get back and and are able to do it again because it gave me a huge boost all week. So thank you, thank you to those folks. So that's all I have. Is there anything more to come before our meeting tonight? Then we will be back in regular session a week from tonight at seven o'clock for our for our bimonthly meeting. So until then, please be careful. Thank you all tonight and we will adjourn our meeting. Good night.